Good morning, everyone. I call this meeting of September 16th, 2025 to order. Join me in deciding the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got a packed house today. Moving on in the agenda, the consent agenda includes 14 items. It was published and copies are available. If you'd like to discuss an item, we'll move to the regular agenda and comments can be made at that time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the chairman to sign documents as required.
Second. Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Next, item three is to consider the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Next, on announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
You know, as we all know, last week was the memorial of September 11 attacks and there were some pretty big murders that happened. I'd like to just have a moment of silence for all victims.
Very good. I would agree with that. Let's have a 30-second moment of silence for all the victims of 9/11 and also our military heroes who defend our freedom. Thank you, everyone. Other announcements, anyone? Okay, moving on to item five, public comments on matters not on the agenda. Do we have anybody who wants to make a comment of matters not on the agenda? Go ahead, Mickey.
Thank you very much. I walked in a little late. Can you give me a second? I'll get my glasses. What I actually, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
What I actually wanted to address very, very briefly this morning was after acquiring the one cent optional spreadsheet for the county. I questioned why the county in 2425 gave to the Salvation Army 25,000 in GPAP budget and anticipate doing the same thing in 26. And I was told yesterday, I had a brief conversation with Mr. Siddle, and he said that the envoy for the Salvation Army indicated that they would be worthy of this penny because they gave gas vouchers, rent vouchers, different types of services were rendered, gasoline, I think I said that, rent, et cetera, to the Salvation Army. The problem that I'm having here is the Salvation Army right now is advertising at their store. They need volunteers to keep the doors open. They need volunteers at the Salvation Army store to continue to function. It's kind of interesting. But my comment this morning is quite specific, optically for me, just for me, perhaps only for me. It looks a bit odd that Commissioner Haswell's husband's company, Inyard, got a fairly substantial contract with the Salvation Army to put up a large porch area, brand new, still has the trucks down there. Where the money came from, I have no idea, if they need volunteers to keep the store open. So my question is this, I really do have a bit of an optic issue with a county commissioner. Her, as she has expressed to me before, it's not her company, it's her husband's company, doing a rather expensive porch. You don't think a little porch, I just spent seven grand on a little porch. We're talking about a big porch in front of the Salvation Army store. So that is my comment this morning. I don't expect any dialogue on it. I just want to say, for over four decades, I lived out in the county and didn't pay attention to what went on in the city of Sheridan, because it was, no, never mind me. The county commissioners are elected from a plurality of voters in the city of Sheridan. They know that. And when I look at the one cent optional, there are other items on here. You know, you look at this and you go to the back session here, and why are we supporting the Museum of the Big Horns? Why are we? Why do we support downtown Sheridan Association, the Sheridan Chamber of Commerce? The United Airlines, we're subsidizing, and they don't get enough riders to bring them into Sheridan, we pay the difference. Why are we doing this? It's because your county doesn't elect your mayor or your city council, but your city elects your county commissioners. And so that is just a comment, a little box talk, like I spoke here, but I really do question what is happening at the Salvation Army, ostensibly a church, is receiving this kind of funding and what for? And as Mr. Siddle told me yesterday, he looked at the application, and it was to pay for various vouchers. I didn't know they had a voucher. I tried reaching them, they couldn't. So that's it. Now I'll just talk a lot of here. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Yeah, just one comment. And Mickey, you just said you weren't able to get ahold of Salvation Army.
I'm sorry.
So I guess when you do, I'd encourage you to get ahold of all the bids that they received for that project. Inyard was the low bid.
Yeah, so what was the bid? How much did it cost? You said yours was the low bid, how much did it cost?
He just, he let me know that they were the low bid.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on matters not on the agenda? Okay, moving on to item six, ratified Sheridan County license agreement 2517 LA with MDU for overhead installation of power line at County Road 111, also known as Box Cross Road, fee of $165. I have a lot of people who want to talk on these items. I will start with Mike Lansing.
Thank you. And I know I spoke at the, and I appreciate you guys holding that public meeting, that was great. I think it was great information, the MDU provided. Since coming there, and I know you have great legal counsel, and I know you're aware that why the statutes do allow the county, and that's why they're applying for the license for the commissioners, they have to obtain a license to enter and cross any county road. That's why I'm statute. There was a case, I'm sure that you've heard of, Van De High versus Public Service Commission. That's what you're concerned about. That's 1990 case where Cheyenne Light wanted to go down around Frontier Mall, down a county road, and then go toward the Air Force Base, and they needed permission to do that. The county commissioners, with a group of citizens very similar to here, said, hey, we don't want to look at that thing, we want it buried. And so the commissioners denied it with the contingency that if they buried it, they would approve it. That went to the Public Service Commission. This Public Service Commission, her testimony, found out it would be 7.3 times more expensive to bury it than to put an overhead, and therefore they said, no, we're going to approve it. They went above the county commissioners, they approved the application without that, upon the denial of the county. It went to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court came and said the Public Service Commission has all regulatory rights for all public utilities. The difference of that case versus this one is in that one, there was no alternative route. There's no alternative route, there was only one route that they could take, and that's what the testimony comes out of Cheyenne Light. They could only go down that county road, they could only get to one place. In the current situation, and this was raised, and there was some comment by MDU, was there is alternative routes. They could go to the corner down Upper Road, or they could go all the way to County Road straight down. They have those two easements. They did mention in his comment, well, we have 30-foot easements, not 50-foot. What evidence have you had from them in their application, or their testimony, or anything to you, that this happens quite a bit with easements, public utility easements? They go and get a 50-foot construction easement, that's why they want 50-foot for construction. Get a 50-foot construction, and then when it's installed, it goes down to 30-foot. Therefore, it doesn't change the property values, it doesn't affect it, and those lines already exist. So what I'm here to do is present, why don't we put that condition on and say, you haven't proven to us the alternative routes. They've said, we talked to the residents. I don't know if that's true or not. There is not much evidence out there that they have taken the steps necessary, alternative routes. Secondly, if you do approve it or deny it, I would send some message to the Public Service Commission saying, will you check out the alternative routes? This is different than Van De High in yours. I know the Bowleys, who I here represent, did file a Public Service Commission complaint, and interestingly enough, MDU just moved to dismiss it. Not answer it, but dismiss it. They do not want to go in front of them. Public Service Commission did send out a questionnaire to both the Bowleys and to MDU, asking for reasons why it shouldn't be buried versus, okay? But there was no questions on alternative routes. So I would ask that, do you guys have the power to send that on behalf of the citizens, a letter to Public Service Commission saying, can you at least ask those questions of it to you before you approve this? Thank you very much. Oh, is there any questions?
Questions for Mike, anyone?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I assume that was for six and item seven, Mike?
Yes, I won't get up again.
Please. Next on my list is Carmelo DC.
Morning. Carmelo DC, I live in Little Goose subdivision on the lower portion of the Upper Road, and I guess my comment here is timely, just to talk to Mr. Lansing here and his comments. As you all know, I am very opposed to the relocation of this power line and very much in favor of burying it. Mr. Lansing says there are existing 30-foot easements on the lower portion of the Upper Road, and this is false. There is a little section on the north end along the Bowley property who we referred to, and then there is, which is for distribution lines that go across to Metalark subdivision on the other side of the county road. There is one pole that goes across Roberts Drive, that is on the edge of my property along the road, and then from that pole, all the way south for over a third of a mile until you get down to Shunk Lane, there are no power poles, no distribution poles, no right-of-ways. That right-of-way does not exist that Mr. Lansing referred to, and if MDU is asked to move that power line down to that road, they will then have to require a 50-foot easement from five lots in the two subdivisions, Little Goose and Sandstone, and those poles will be placed on our property, and they will be, they will have to acquire easements. There are no easements through there. They don't exist. They might exist going down Box Cross down to State Highway, but there are no easements for over a third of a mile along the Upper Road. And, you know, I've expressed my opposition to the moving of it. I also have a group that has not been part of this, is the Metalark subdivision, who all face west, will be looking at this power line if there's, I've got a list of 15 people in their subdivision that has great opposition to a power line being moved in front of their homes and having to look at something that does not exist. It's not fair. There's no easement, there's no power lines in there. It's been stated in the past that we're used to looking at power poles. We're not. There's no power poles there. There's no easement there. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Carmelo. Next on my list is Allison Lutes.
Lutes.
Lutes, I'm sorry.
Good morning. I'm not as well-informed as these people, I'm just a new resident. My husband and I moved here from Utah. Our house on Sandstone closed July 17th. July 19th, one of our neighbors came over and introduced himself and said, oh, and by the way, MDU is planning to put up these large power lines. So that got us involved. It's, it's, could have affected our decision on this home, which is our dream retirement home. It's very disheartening to know that this may happen, and I see a couple of our neighbors here, and it would be much closer to their houses, close enough for ours. I just, I just wanted to express that I went to the September 4th meeting, and one thing that stuck out of my mind was MDU saying, we want to be good stewards, and that's stuck in my mind since. And to me, what is a good steward? Are they talking about their bottom line? Because I think we need to pause, and I just urge you to please vote against this, take a pause. What's the rush? I would love for you to bury, and I see other utilities are buried. I don't understand, so I'm not well-educated and informed, I get that, but it is, you know, passionately, I guess, to please consider not allowing this at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Next on my list is Lori Goodman.
Thank you for allowing me to speak one last time on this issue. I'd like to step back and give you, just for the record, my home is at 17 Sandstone Circle, and the deck of my home is 50 feet from the right-of-way of where this line would go through. I located my home there because there was a certain envelope that was included in my purchase price that had been developed by the Shunks who created the subdivision, and that included the requirement to bury all the utility lines in that area and a 25-foot height. So I built it there, assuming that I had those abilities and those guarantees. So the fact that this came in, you know, four years later, to me is a betrayal, that I can't even begin to express to you how deep that goes. In two is my main home, and for a lot of my own personal reasons, it's my own refuge of where I want to be for the rest of my life. I want to give you guys a little bit of history and offer to you my services pro bono. About, in 19, in 2000, I had permitted the largest natural gas field that was located in the Lower 48, and that was in Sublet County, and it was the Jonah Field. And I had come, I worked for Senator Simpson, and I had also worked, believe it or not, for the EPA. My father told me to tell people I played piano in a whorehouse. But I had both of those experiences. And I was a Republican, so when the Clinton administration came in, I was dismissed and came back and went to Wyoming. And during the construction of this field, that was the time that horizontal drilling was coming into play, that smaller locations could be, instead of one well on 160 acres, they were putting it on 10 acres. And all my rancher friends in that area came to me quite alarmed and said, we own the surface, but we don't own the minerals underneath. And because of that, much like what MDU has, they had a right of eminent domain, they had the superior right to go in as long as they had a lease from the US government, and they said, these companies are coming in and telling us they have every right to do this, they don't have any alternatives, they're not going to seek any alternatives, they're telling us where the roads will go, where the infrastructure will go in, what do we do? And I was still pretty perky in that period of time and feeling really well, and I said, surely, there's something we can do. So I called our legislators and was like, it's the oil industry, they're coming in, this is going to be a great field, 450 wells, I'm going to fast forward. We got down to Washington, down to Cheyenne, and we had proposed a piece of legislation. By that time, we had created a statewide kind of loose organization. People over here looking at the coalbed methane got involved, people in the center of the state, Fremont County ranchers were involved. So we had a little bit of a state group put together, and we went down there, and we were just stonewalled. And it was shocking to me, the lack of attention, thoughtful attention, I mean, this oil and gas industry, I had visited the multi-diners of wells that they drill offshore, what they do in many areas, I knew their technological ability. And so I went to lunch with one of my friends, who was with the oil and gas industry, and I said, why do you do this? What? You know you can do better. You know these are Republican citizens of the state of Wyoming. You know the technology is out there, because you do it in California, and you do it in Louisiana. Why do you do this? And he looked at me and he said, because we can't. And it took us four years, two years on that project, and two years for another one, and we changed the Wyoming state law to give those landowners what, we never took away the ability for the oil companies to do what they had to do, but we strengthened that one. All of the legislators from this county supported that bill. Rosie Berger was actually the one, she was a brand-new legislator, and she carried it, and our mighty forces, once educated, once people know what's happening, once people understand, even in this county, I think this could happen, what this means to them for future growth, what that means to put in that kind of an electric corridor in that area, not just for us. It does mean a lot for us in that neighborhood, I will make no bones about that in both of them. Those are our investments, and it makes the difference between our quality of life, our night skies, our noise, our, if we wanted to live near an infrastructure, we were built near one. And we didn't do that because of the circumstances and the scenic view shed that was designated and existed that you guys had approved. So I'm offering to you, the MDU, I place in that same category, they act this way because they can. And they will not act this way, I have experience in this, when they can't. You'd be amazed what happens with these companies when they're told no on the easiest solution. That guy, Rob Frank, told us all clearly at the meeting, they did it this way because this was the easiest. It was cheapest, it was on landowner, it was going straight across, that was their criteria, and that's what they wanted to do. If you tell them no, which I am imploring you to do today, you will, your heads will spin at how quickly they're going to come up with another way to do this. It may be another route, they may work with the Shunks to go further west. I would offer that they will get on the airplane, and they will spend a little time with the Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory folks, who are helping people with DOL money to bury these routes in other places. And I want to offer to you also my services, getting a little bit gray in the head now, but I would, I would help you pro bono with your planning commission on the work that you have to do to take a look at these issues, to present them to the county, to have public meetings. I would defer to your authorities and elected officials at all time, but I know being dumped into this is a little bit jarring, especially when you will look at somebody with their strength and their credibility and all the rest of that. So I want you to know that I would pledge to help you and to give you ideas and make contacts and do the research necessary to find out what county commissioners you need to talk to in Texas, in Louisiana, in Oregon, in Washington, in California, in the states where transmission lines have been buried. They were buried, they figured it out, and the world goes on. So I wanted to make that offer you today. Thank you for your time, and thank you for considering denying those last two permits to give us the winner to work this out.
Thank you, Lori. That's all I have on my sign-up sheet for public comment on this item. I would say, so we can talk about it, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign Sheridan County license agreement 2517 LA with MDU for overhead installation of power line at County Road 111, aka Box Cross Road.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion and a second discussion?
Now, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I hear some comment back there, unbelievable that that motion was made. Realize that we can't vote on anything unless we have a motion, okay? And you can't make negative motions if you, if you understand parliamentary procedure. Motions have to be made in a positive fashion. So the unbelievable comment really grates on my nerves back there that somebody made, because we have to make a motion in a positive fashion in order to be able to discuss anything and/or vote on anything. So please understand that, regardless of how we're going to vote, we have to have that sort of a motion. Thank you.
And otherwise, if you can be quiet, you can hit the road. So we have discussion, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I have a short statement that I'd like to read.
Please.
As I read through Wyoming statute 126813, it is stated twice that any application shall receive response and be approved or denied. The exact wording is as follows. Upon receiving an application as required in the subsection, any necessary permits, licenses, or authorizations shall receive a response, be approved or be denied by the city, department of transportation, or the county. Unless a different period is stipulated to by the parties, the city, department of transportation, or the county shall respond to the application, approve or deny all any permits, authorizations, or licenses not later than 60 calendar days after receipt of the application. This requirement for approval or denial provides a very clear point that the Board of County Commissioners have the decision-making authority to approve or deny any license for a project in the future. If not, there would be no need for a vote. With that being said, it is also very clear that should a project be approved, the manner in which an applicant proceeds is not regulated by the Board of County Commissioners. Having studied this statute, attended the public meeting, and talked to many different individuals on this project, I believe that it would have been a great project 40 years ago, or even a decade ago, but Sheridan County has changed over the last few decades, and what worked then will not work now. I'm very grateful to both the applicant and the citizens of this community for sharing their thoughts, facts, feelings, and opinions, and my greatest hope is that even though I will be voting against these likely applications today, that a step back can be taken and all the stakeholders can work together for a common solution that will provide the greatest benefit to our whole community.
Thank you. Other discussions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I also have a written statement. Missionary?
Please.
I will be voting to deny permit 2517 LA and 2518 LA because the residents and property owners in the area of this transmission line are overwhelmingly against it, and look to the board of county commissioners to represent them. I do not feel that Montana Decoli Utilities has done enough to address the concerns of these home and property owners, who are the people that I represent. As I read on the state statute 126813, it appears to me that these permits should have been applied for before construction is contemplated. That's what it says right in the statute. Not after a considerable amount of construction is contemplated. not within the powers of the Sheridan County Board of County Commissioners to decide. Neither is the option for alternate routes. Wyoming State Statute 126-813 is clear. We as county commissioners shall respond to the application by either approving or denying them, nothing more. Therefore, I will be voting to deny them. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I do believe that it's unfortunate that we haven't heard from, from the property owner who granted the easement in the first place, that MDU negotiated in good faith with a private property owner who we also, is also one of our constituents, that they, that they did get granted an easement. Obviously, I don't know what, what financial arrangement was made in that case to get the easement, to grant the easement to MDU. They did obviously operate, which is ironic, given Mrs. Goodman's statement earlier, that it happens to be the same property owner who developed the subdivision in the first place and then, and then granted the easement to build the power line. I, I do, and I appreciate our lawyer getting up and addressing us about the, the case that was before us because certainly that's been brought to our attention. And, and I have, I have visited with several lawyers who, none of them told me that, that they thought we were going to do any good if we deny this. But, I mean, we have the opportunity to deny it. I don't know that the Public Service Commission won't overrule it. I don't know that. I mean, that's our opportunity and I don't guess, I'm 100% sure if the Public Service Commission has already approved it, I don't know that for 100% fact. If anybody knows that for 100% fact, I don't know that. But at any rate, I'm, this is, this is a tough deal all the way around, who the constituents are, what we do, and then, and then what's for the public good in the future because we know that the area's going to continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, this is a hard one because I do feel like the case law was clear that counties do not have authority to regulate the type of construction within a right of way. And that all that regulatory authority lies with the Public Service Commission. I really feel like they're the ones with the teeth in this situation. They're the ones that are going to be able to dictate the type of construction, not, not us. And I, you know, I have a little heartburn voting against case law. You know, and I, and I hear the public and Lori, I appreciate you volunteering your time to help planning and zoning, but I really feel like we need to do something in Cheyenne that's going to have some teeth. You know, we, if you're acquiring easements on private land, we don't even hear about that. We don't approve those. So something had happened in the eighties and now, you know, we're asked to go back and fix it and, and impact people's private property rights on both sides of the fence. So I, I'm torn. You know, I might vote against this, although I feel like it has no bearing and it's not our authority. I don't feel like it does anything, but.
Yeah. I too am torn. I have these exact holes and power lines going past my house. And I know a lot of people already do as well. Are they in my view shed? No. That's the big difference. And my wife, I'm going to give her credit, she said, you know, it's not just the folks that live there that have to look at this. We all have to look at it. So if we're driving down Upper Road or Box Cross, bam, there we are forever. So I don't think we have the authority to, to do much good, but I too will vote to deny and try to delay and see if we can get something, some other alternative done. So anyway, any other discussion? Motion of a second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. Moving on to item number seven, which is pretty much a copy of item number six, ratified Sheridan County Lease Agreement 2518 LA with MDU for overhead installation of power line at County Road 111, also known as Box Cross Road, a fee of $205.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I move to approve and authorize the chair to sign County License Agreement 2518 LA with MDU for overhead installation of the power line at County Road 111, AKA Box Cross Road.
Second.
Motion second. Any more discussion needed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just quickly, we had a bunch of people get up and leave the room. They must not have watched all the way to the end of the Buffalo Bills game the other night. What could possibly happen on this motion?
Right.
Other, other discussion that actually have something to do with this?
Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. Moving on in the intended to item number eight, Consider Sheridan County Airport Lease Agreement Amendment Number One between Sheridan County and Big Horn Airways Incorporated, and I call on Robert Gill, Airport Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert Gill, Sheridan County Airport Manager. This original lease was executed with Abcon Electronics and later assigned to Big Horn Airways, Inc. on October 1st, 2003. The agreement covers aircraft hangar and office space located at 903 West Rundage Lane, which includes direct access to the general aviation ramp. Upon assignment to Big Horn Airways, the lease term was adjusted to 20 years to the official tier of extension options. The option has since been exercised and the current lease is approaching expiration. Remember, Amendment Number One will extend the lease for additional three months establishing a new expiration date of December 31st, 2025. This extension will provide adequate time to continue to solicit and review proposals for new long-term lease on the property. Therefore, I respectfully recommend that the Sheridan County Board of County Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Airport Lease Agreement with Big Horn Airways, Inc. I would stand for any questions.
Questions for Robert, anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign Sheridan County Airport Lease Agreement Amendment Number One between Sheridan County and Big Horn Airways Incorporated.
Second.
Motion of a second, discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I think this just makes sense, so I'll be in favor.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion of a second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item nine on the agenda, Consider Leasur's Consent to Assignment between McDonald and McDonald Two Land and LLC, sorry, and Big Horn Airways Incorporated. Once again, Robert Gill, Airport Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert Gill, Sheridan County Airport Manager. McDonald McDonald Two Land LLC currently owns an office building at 2665 Aviation Drive at the Sheridan County Airport Business Park. This building sits on land lease from Sheridan County. McDonald McDonald Two Land LLC is seeking to sell that building to Big Horn Airways. As far as the sale of the building, the land lease will need to be signed to Big Horn Airways. Per the terms of the land lease agreement, Leasur may not transfer, assign, or otherwise alienate its interest in the premises or sublet any part of the premises without first obtaining county's great consent. Counties shall not unreasonably withhold, delay, or condition consent to any such assignment or subletting as any responsible corporation, individual, or other business entity capable of receiving such assignment. Therefore, I respectfully recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve Leasur's Consent to Assignment between McDonald McDonald Two Land LLC and Big Horn Airways, Inc. I would stand for any question.
Questions for Robert on this item?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign Leasur's Consent to Assignment between McDonald and McDonald Two Land LLC and Big Horn Airways, Inc.
Seven. Motion of a second, any discussion?
Stay forward.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Moving on to item number 10. Consider item CD-25-002J, the Lesby Draw Conservation Design Subdivision. And I'll call on Margaret County Planner.
Thank you, Chairman Ryan. Number 24, Margaret County Planner. Here with a second here while the tube's warming up. Sharon Heights Ranch LLC has applied for a subdivision that's in the mode of section 10 of the range, 622.9 acre property adjacent to County Road 74, also known as Salt Creek Road. With the exception of two small urban residential areas adjacent to Kendrick Golf Course, the majority of property is owned by agricultural. The applicant proposes the creation of 13 residential tracks and two conservation lots from currently unplanted areas just west of the city of Sheridan. The lots ranging in size from, the residential lots ranging in size from roughly four and a half to nine and a quarter acres. The two conservation tracks total 535 acres plus or minus. As per the Section 211 of the Conservation Design Subdivision Rules and Regulations governing division of land in Sheridan County, Wyoming, there are no existing structures on this property. Legal access is accommodated through West Fifth Street, which is a city street actually. Also, there would be privately dedicated access easements, to be known as Gillespie Drawn Porcupine Lane. County Road 74 also abuts the northeast side of the subdivision, but only the conservation track, one of the conservation tracks is in touch. Public improvements will include installation of a fire hydrant that would tap an existing 16-inch city main on Gillespie Drive. Other proposed facilities would include improved roadways and storm sewer utilizing previous quarry haul routes. So there is a road that's in, in place currently that will be repurposed for residential purposes. Domestic water is proposed in individual wells for each residential lot. Private on-site small wastewater systems would be utilized for the sewer. There are no vacations of any previous easements or flats involved here. We have engineering plant and specs prepared by Morrison Marley. Engineer's opinion of probable cost for the improvements, including the railway, water system, fire hydrant, and storm sewer are $649,000 approximately. We have a subdivision improvement agreement executed by Sharon Heights Ranch with a letter of credit from First Federal Bank posted for 100% of the proposed improvements. The subdivision road maintenance, so ongoing down the line should be approved, would not involve no public maintenance. The responsible will be assigned to the Gillespie Draw Homeowners Association in their draft declaration of covenants. There are no groundwater protection areas identified in this proposed area. Conservation design standards outlined in the staff report require a minimum gross area of 70 acres. This is, as I mentioned, over 622 acres. Minimum lot area for residents requires a quarter acre. Minimum size in this case is approximately four and a half acres. Base subdivision density in this area is one unit per 40 acres. Their proposed density is 1 per 47.9 acres. They are not asking for any subdivision density bonuses, which would entitled to get down to one unit per 20 acres, but none are being proposed in this case. Conservation area standard is 70% of the gross area is to be set aside for conservation purposes. They are proposing 86% of the gross area to be included in conservation. Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality has provided a non-adverse recommendation to the board. That was June 27th. But they did ask that a, they recommended a note be added to the final plat, which has been included regarding, after domestic well installation prior to use, the DDQ does recommend that homeowners have their wells sampled for the following constituents: TDS, lead, sulfate, calcium, magnesium, sodium, iron, fluorid, manganese, and installed water treatment equipment based on those results. In addition, the Wyoming Quality, Water Quality Division suggests homeowners have their wells tested on a semi-regular basis. So that, that note is added to the plat. Let's see. Water rights, there are none reported within the proposed subdivision boundary. The special flood hazard areas, there are none identified in this area. Order of management for the conservation area, Conservation Tracks 1 and 2 will be conveyed to and owned and maintained by the Sheridan Community Lands LLC. Long-term stewardship and monitoring of the conservation tracks shall be the responsibility of Sheridan Community Land Trust. Platens 14 and 15 provide for these for existing and future conservation easements with the land trust covering both conservation tracks. This area is within the municipal one-mile areas. City of Sheridan staff have requested that the small strips of land currently within the proposed subdivision and also within the municipal corporate limits adjacent Kendrick Golf Course be officially deannexed. That, the applicant had filed for that deannexation. The city council is currently going through an ordinance process. They had approved an ordinance deannexing those areas on their first reading. I believe they had their second reading last night. I don't know. I assume it was probably approved as well and not received anything contrary to that action. Access to West Fifth Street at Gillespie Drive has been approved, provided proper signage placed in light of alert drivers to pedestrian traffic. That comes from the city engineer. The applicant has included such signage in their final construction plans. Notification, legal notices ran on September 2nd and on September 9th, as per our rules, adjacent property owners were mailed on July 18th. Deduction bonuses, as I had mentioned earlier, they are not requesting any bonuses which would enable additional lots to be planted, but they are not requesting any such consideration. There are several variance requests. I will sit here and read all of them. They are on your agenda and action on each of those will need to occur before your final consideration of the permit itself or the subdivision. The applicants can certainly go into each of those requests at your desire. Planning Commission considered this item on October 7th, oh, sorry, August 7th, and voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of each of the variance requests. And they followed up with a 3-0 vote to recommend approval of item CD-25002J, Gillespie Draw Subdivision, with the following condition, and that being that those portions of the subdivision currently within the city of Sheridan be deannexed pursuant to State Statute. That's a lot of information. If you have any questions regarding the staff's review and analysis, be happy to answer those. I believe the agent for the applicant is present as well, if you would like them to go into any further detail.
That's a lot, Mark, it is. Questions for Mark? Okay, this item requires a public hearing, which I will open at 9:50. And on my sign-up sheet, I have Janie Jolman who would like to speak on this.
In that suit hall. Thank you for letting me speak to you. I would like to, I am Janie Jolman. We live in Osprey subdivision. I would like to encourage you to vote no on the approval of the Gillespie Draw Conservation District. As you know, the city of Sheridan was not awarded the build grant to start on the West Side Quarter. It appears that the federal government is listening to the objections of the citizens of Sheridan County, whereas the city government is not. The city is now using cap tax money to investigate the feasibility of building a bypass road through the lower end of Gillespie Draw. Currently, the West Side Quarter is set to go through a no build zone, so labeled on the plat because it is a water drainage area. The neighbors who regularly deal with the effects of the high water table are concerned about the long-term stability of a road in this location. That is just one of the many reasons the residents who live in the area believe the results of this feasibility study will find that building a bypass road through lower Gillespie Draw is not feasible. Is the West Side Quarter a city-only issue or is it also a county issue? The Sheridan Joint Planning Area Plans set a goal, number 3.2, to identify and preserve transportation corridors. Those are nice words, but the city has repeatedly chosen to allow housing developments over the preservation of a West Side Quarter. We fear you are about to follow the same pattern. If building a road through lower Gillespie Draw is deemed not feasible or too costly, the next best option is through what is, what you're talking about, the Gillespie Draw Conservation District. But once you make it a conservation district, a road is no longer an option. We are asking you to wait. We're not saying no to a conservation district, but wait and see what happens with the feasibility of building through lower Gillespie Draw, unless perchance you are cheering for no West Side Quarter. Thank you for letting me speak to you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to talk on item 10? Anyone? You might jump up. So I will close the public hearing at 9:53. Make your motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move to approve the variance for a private access easement versus public road right-of-way as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Motion on the second, discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I would just comment to Ms. Jolman's statements. You know, I feel like the developer, you know, has his rights to put this subdivision together, and I have no idea what the timeline is for the city's corridor study, and I would hate to put this off indefinitely for the developer. So, I'm voting in support of this subdivision. I just wanted to make that comment upfront here.
Okay. Anybody else? I guess I would say that the amount of variance, the number of variances that are requested here is, in my mind, over the top. Normally, variances are requested because of a hardship. Some of these I could see make sense, and some of them I think the developer just wants to save money. So, with that being said, we have a motion in the second. All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve the variance for a dead-end road in excess of 1,200 feet as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Motion on the second, discussion? All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the variance for turnaround Ts in lieu of standard cul-de-sacs as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. The motion on the second, discussion? Mr. Chairman, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Breed.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I just have a problem with this because sooner or later I think it's going to get them into a bind, and I think that we're going to have some traffic issues with this, and so I'll be voting no on this.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I, I too think that standard cul-de-sacs are much better than turnaround Ts, especially in the, in the paperwork, it mentioned that they would have to be plowed for turnarounds and so on, and, you know, trying to turn around a fire truck in a T with snow drifted on the sides and planted on the sides would be a lot more difficult than a standard cul-de-sac. So, I too am going to vote against this variance.
Anybody else? I read in the paperwork that they were wanting turnaround Ts instead of cul-de-sacs because cul-de-sacs tend to have material and vehicles parked in the way, so I think that's a pretty, pretty weak reason for a turnaround T. Anyway, we have a motion in the second. All the favors signify by saying aye. And against?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the variance for the road grade exceeding 8% for a short distance as recommended by the Planning and Zoning.
Second. Motion on the second, discussion? All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I move to approve the variance for an eight-lock cluster maximum as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Motion on the second, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is one that I started with until I read more into it, and I do appreciate the fact that they're attempting to make some of these lots bigger, so it does make sense that it would be spread out more, so, okay, grab it.
Okay. Anybody else? All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the variance for the firefighting water supply to utilize a fire hydrant instead of onsite storage as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Motion on the second, discussion? I would, I would say this is good because I've dealt with frozen-up systems before trying to get water out of them, so this is a good deal, so. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to agree. I appreciate the fact that they worked with the fire department to come up with a solution that would deal with those issues.
All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion passes. And lastly?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve item CD-25002J, Gillespie Draw subdivision, with the one condition as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Motion on the second, discussion? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, by my, yes. So, with the denial of the request on the cul-de-sacs, you may even want to consider another condition requiring that they redo the plat to include cul-de-sacs and appropriate construction documents showing that the cul-de-sacs, how they're going to be built, as well as updating their, their engineers estimate cost. So, if you would, that's my suggestion is to include a second condition and bring that back to you for your final consideration.
Suggesting that we table it for now?
No, I'm not suggesting that. Perhaps just adding a second condition, that would all documentation be updated to reflect that cul-de-sacs will be used as opposed to the hammerheads. I'd say perhaps we want to table that, so I just.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we table this until we get the drawings back for the modification for the cul-de-sacs.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion on the second, to table it?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, just a bit more discussion.
Yeah.
We can't just say they have to send updated plaques in? I mean, I feel like we've discussed this enough. If they have to have cul-de-sacs and the plat needs to be updated, I feel like it's a pretty straightforward thing to ask them to do and not have to wait for another one of our meetings to come back again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Is there a way to amend, technically, we got two motions on, that we're discussing because we made the motion first, and then we made a second motion to table. Is there a way to rescind the motion to table, come back to the original motion, amend that to get the information needed?
Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what I wanted to do, so we can vote to fail the motion to table and then come back and make an amendment on the motion, adding one condition to the motion.
Okay.
I think that's a better way to handle it than table it at this point.
Very good. Let's have a, we have a motion in a second to table it.
I can, let's draw that motion.
Well, we can just load it down. If that'll work for you. Anyway, all the favor of tabling the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Oh, no, I'm not.
This is your idea!
Okay, opposed. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
To not table it.
I guess that's.
Chairman, it fails.
I move to amend item CD-25-002J by adding one more condition that we require them to provide documentation showing that they have made cul-de-sacs instead of T-designed subdivision and updating the cost estimate based on designing those cul-de-sacs.
Seven minutes. Motion on the second, discussion on that? Anyone?
So, so that motion includes the condition from Planning and Zoning?
It does.
That the subdivision currently within the city of Sheridan be deannexed?
Yep.
And then also updated plat?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, are we voting on amendment and we'll come back to?
Correct. So.
Mr. Chairman, do you want that to come back to this body, or do you want Public Works just to verify that it's been taken care of?
I'm fine to let Public Works handle it if you don't mind.
No, I think that's exactly what we want.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we have, I've lost. We have an amendment to add that they come back with updated paperwork showing new drawings, cul-de-sacs versus turnaround Ts. All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, back to the original motions to approve the subdivision. Is there any discussion left? All the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Back, we are moving on to.
Just a point of clarity.
Yep.
On the very first motion, I could not hear the vote, and when you said it passed, do you wish it to show five to zero or four to one?
The variance for private access?
Very first motion.
Yeah, I have this five to zero. Four to one, okay. Four to one.
So you can see why I'm confused, and so are the against.
Correct.
Can we clarify that the second motion was five to zero?
Correct. Yes.
Third motion failed, zero to five?
Yep.
Yep.
Next motion passed, five to zero?
Yes.
Next motion, five to zero passed?
I think so.
The next motion, five to zero passed?
Correct.
The final emotion, the table failed, the amendment passed, the motion as amended passed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Item 11 on my agenda, consider request for removal of condition number three from item CD-25-001, the Faro Minor Conservation Design subdivision. Once again, Mark Breed County Planner?
Thank you, Chairman Wright, members of board, and Mark Breed. So, you have a request for you to rescind the condition that was placed on item CD-25001, Faro Minor subdivision, submitted on behalf of the Faros by Dustin Corrigan, who is the agent for the applicant. I've got a timeline here that kind of sets all the facts in order. July 3rd, Planning and Zoning Commission considered CD-25001, Faro Minor, as part of their motion, which ultimately failed as a condition requiring an agreement addressing the fencing issue between the Bellishes and the Faros. On August 5th, the commissioner, your county commissioners, considered this item as part of your approval, a condition requiring an agreement be put in place that addresses the fencing issue as per Bellish's letter of June 29, 2025. You firmly clarified the agreement must be in writing and submitted to Public Works prior to the plat being signed on August 2nd. Written a request to remove the condition of approval number three regarding required fencing agreement was submitted by Dustin Corrigan, applicant's agent and project manager, to the board of county commissioners and also to the planning office on September 2nd. That request included the following items. An August 22 letter to the board of county commissioners, August 14 letter from Faro to Bellish. Third item, draft fence line agreement. Fourth item, fence exhibit prepared by WWC showing where the fence lines versus the actual property lines are. And then also a fifth item, postal service tracking information regarding where some went over to the Bellishes. On September 3rd, the planning office forward the request from Faros to the county commissioners' office for consideration on today's agenda, that we also made a notice to the Faros and the Bellishes regarding the board's scheduled consideration of the Faro's request on September 16th, and then finally on September 9th, Bellishes did submit a letter to the county commissioners requesting denial of the Faro's petition to remove the condition of approval number three regarding fencing for the Faro Minor subdivision. So that's just a timeline of what's occurred since July 3rd. I lay my position of regarding the pluses or minuses of this, this is something that you folks will need to take out, I believe. I know the agent for the Faros is here, I'm not sure if Bellish have any representation there. Yeah, they do. Okay, so anyway, that's kind of where we're at, so you need to cast your votes accordingly.
Okay, Mark, thank you very much. Questions for Mark on this? Anybody? On my sign-up sheet, I have L. Bellish who would like to talk on this, so, Mr. Bellish?
I'm L. Bellish, and I remember saying the Bellish Family Trust. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Get right in there, mister, and talk right into it. Yeah.
You hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry to bother with this thing again. I'd like to read from the letter that Mr. Corrigan sent to you dated August 22nd, that he says, "Despite multiple attempts over recent weeks to resolve the matter through direct communication, Mr. Bellish has stated he is not interested in continued discussion or negotiations." Well, this is disingenuous at best, but there was a thing on the timeline I sent to you that I had forgotten, and that was on the 20th of August, which is two days before his letter. And that was on the 20th of August, which is two days before his letter. I had emailed my proposal to Mr. Farrow. So there has been repeated contacts between you and Mr. Farrow or Mr. Corrigan. But apparently, Mr. Farrow and Mr. Corrigan have a communication problem because they can't seem to get this straight about when I'm communicating and when I'm not. Anyways. So soon for me, if this subdivision, if Mr. Farrow is able to successfully sell the property and subdivision, I will have two new neighbors. And I'm pretty sure that the new neighbors would like to have fences in good repair and that the fences be online. So, in the spirit of Robert Frost's well-known line, good fences make good neighbors, I request that you do not remove condition number three. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Want to talk next to him?
Yes.
Okay.
Dustin Corrigan on behalf of Joe Farrow, applicant. And I would like to address Mr. Bellish's concerns with the timeline errors. I'm at the mercy of Mr. Farrow giving me the communications that he's had with Mr. Bellish. And I do understand that he had his response back to Mr. Farrow before our deadline. I had submitted our letter prior to that knowledge. I didn't know that he had had communications with Mr. Bellish before I submitted the letter the initial time. And aside from that, I know I had referenced that you had not had any interest in communicate or continued discussions or negotiations. And that was from Mr. Farrow's interpretation of the conversation. I have not had any conversations with Mr. Bellish. So my information comes from my client and I have not been involved in all of the communications. I was just the one that put the letter together. As far as I know, the last communications that Mr. Farrow and Mr. Bellish had was the letter from Mr. Bellish regarding cost sharing on the fence. And Mr. Farrow was not happy with that because Mr. Bellish wanted to have a final say in the contractor that was selected as well as the fencing materials that were selected. So as far as we understood, that would not allow Mr. Farrow to install the fence himself or select the materials. As long as it's a lawful fence, it shouldn't have been an issue. But Mr. Farrow feels like now all of the power is in Mr. Bellish's toward to choose the contractor. And it just became messy. And we're just looking to resolve that by getting rid of this condition of approval. Mr. Farrow is encroaching on Mr. Bellish's land with an existing fence, but Mr. Bellish is also approaching on Mr. Farrow's land with a portion of fence. Convenience fencing has happened across the state for 100-plus years. I run into it weekly in my profession. The fence has been accepted where it is. The cows from Mr. Bellish's side are not often on Farrow's side, if ever. They're doing their jobs right now. The fence has stood there for 100 years. I know there's been reference to handshake deals that were made 30 years ago. It's just a messy fence situation and it's not unique in that respect. But that's all I have to say. I'll stand for questions.
Anybody got questions for Dustin? Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to talk on this?
So, Mr. Chairman, yeah, this motion's wording kind of weird. You know, I'm not in favor of removing the condition and maybe we can just cut this down and you know, just have the motion in positive of approving condition three. And then have discussion. I don't know.
Make your, make your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve removal of condition number three from item CD 25-001.
That's good enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Second. The motion in a second, discussion?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I had a chance to talk to Sue Bellish. And she had explained that, you know, as you've read from the letter, they're happy to put, you know, cover 50% of the costs and let Mr. Farrow even choose the contractor. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, L., but that seems perfectly reasonable to me. And I just, you know, Mr. Farrow started building without proper permits. He's misled about communications with the Bellishes. I don't know if I was the Bellishes, if I would want them to trust him to build the fence. I think having a neutral third party, having a contractor come in is absolutely reasonable. So I'm not in favor of removing that condition.
Anybody else?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I too am not in favor of removing that condition. You know, Mr. Corrigan stated it's a messy fence situation. It's a messy fence situation that needs to be decided and fixed between the two owners. And removing that, in my mind, it doesn't fix it. It just leaves a messy fence situation.
Yes. Anyone else? I have been in many, many messy fence situations in my life. And the answer is when in doubt, put it online. I don't care how steep the hill is or how rocky it is. It should go online. And this is a brain science. So surely to God, you guys can get together and get an agreement.
Mr. Chairman, the other thing is, the agreement doesn't necessarily say it has to be put online. It just says they have to agree to where it's going, you know? I mean, that's what it says. If you make a good solid mess where it is, that's between them. But that they need to come to an agreement.
Yeah. No, I hear you.
Yeah.
Anyway. Anything else? There's a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, if we vote aye, we are voting to approve removing that. If we vote no, we are saying leave it in.
Correct. Correct.
I'll try and get it right.
Motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails. Okay. Moving on to item number 12. Consider agreement between the Sheridan County Conservation District and Sheridan County for the Sheridan County Tongue River Clean Burn Stabilization Design Water Resources Improvement Project. That's a mouthful. Kim Muller, County Engineer.
Good morning, Chairman Wright and the board, Kim Muller. Uh, this is a grievle before you, as we've talked about, it's coming for quite some time. As you know, our Clean Burn Recreational Site has a good stretch of the Tongue River that goes through it. It's been eroding, the bank erosion for years. I think in about 2013 or 14, we actually moved the county road over because of the erosion. So we started kind of searching for partners to maybe help pay for stream stabilization project. And we reached out to the Conservation District. And they started looking, we did that about three years ago, and they started looking for some funding to help with the design of this, this project. And they have found $75,000 to go towards design. And if you enter this agreement, we'll add that money to design.
Very good. Questions for Kim?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Kim, um, this states in here that the Conservation District will provide 100% of the $75,000 of the development cost. And I'm assuming that anything above $75,000 would be some kind of cost share of the Sheridan County, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. If you recall, the last budget section, I did budget some money in the line I have in command the capital facilities tax to make up any difference above. We currently don't know what the cost could be. We currently have an RFP out for engineering services that is due later this month. It's a qualification-based RFP. And once we select a qualified professional to take on this project, then we'll negotiate a fee. So we don't know what the fee will be. If it's too high, we might not be able to go with the project.
If that's, that's kind of where I was going, is I just didn't want the open-endedness of signing on to something without saying this is our top. So thank you.
Any else, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the Sheridan County Tongue River Clean Burn Stabilization Design Water Resources Improvement Project Agreement between the Sheridan County Conservation District and Sheridan County.
Say that twice.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion passes. Item 13 on the agenda, consider approval of Sheridan County Equipment Use Agreement and pause it for the public to utilize road closure signs and barricade kits when needed for planning events. Once again, Kim Muller, County Engineer.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the Sheridan County is getting, frequently gets, and it seems like we're getting more requests to close county roads for social events. In the past, it's been on Public Works or Road and Bridge to physically go out, set up the barricades before the event and then go back and take them up after the event. This agreement, your staff worked a great agreement out with the county attorney's input. And this will allow the individuals that are requesting the closure upon approval of your, this board, to come up to the Road and Bridge, pick up the road closure sign, traffic control devices, deposit some money, it's $250 in this case, as just to make sure they bring them back. Put the onus on the people instead of Public Works staff or the Road and Bridge staff.
Got it.
It's a good idea. Recommend we approve it.
Okay. Questions for Kim on this item?
So, Mr. Chairman, so Kim, that, it's $250 deposit, but when they bring the equipment back and it's not damaged, they just get their money back. So it really doesn't cost them anything, just the effort to put up the signs and bring them back.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So if it gets damaged or missing and they're on the hook to replace it.
Correct. Yeah. Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I move to approve use of Sheridan County use for, and pause it for the public use of road closure signs and barricade kits when needed for planning events.
Second. The motion in a second, any discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I really like this idea, so thanks for bringing it forward.
Anybody else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Item 14 on the agenda. Consider Resolution 25-09-026, Notice of Intent to Vacate Public Road Known as County Road Number 85, Also Known as Rabbit Creek Road in Section 31 Township 55 North, Range 85 West. Once again, County Engineer, Kim Muller.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you received the petition a while ago for this road vacation and appointed me as the viewer. I wrote the viewer's report. It extends from the previously vacated piece you guys recently done and goes north to kind of an unspecified point. I pointed that out in my report. We do use the very north end of this vacation request as a turnaround for our snow piles and our maintenance operations. So I think the request is practical and I don't see a lot of issues with, issue the notice of intent of this vacation. As long as it's clear that the point that I've noted is the termination of the vacation. We can still utilize that area for our maintenance operations, so. And I think the applicants representing is here, if you have any discussion, questions?
I'll be thinking about.
Questions for Kim on this? Anyone?
So, Kim, I just, so this is just the notice of intent, this is an approval of it, correct?
Yeah, if you support this resolution, yeah, it'll be the notice of intent to set out the advertising requirements that by statute to solicit claims for damages.
And then we'll have a public hearing before we go on.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve, authorize the chairman to sign Resolution 25-09-026, Notice of Intent to Vacate Public Road Known as County Road 85, AKA Rabbit Creek Road in Section 31 Township 55 North, Range 85 West.
Second then. Motion in a second, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, closed. Motion passes. Item 15 on the agenda, consideration of fiscal year '24, '25 Budget Amendment Number Two on Eda Thompson County Budget Office.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Mr. Josh Thompson. County Attorney, Attorney General Huxton. Basically, according to Resolution 25-09, on 25 Budget Amendment Number Two, this deals with the employee health benefit that had expenditures more than their respective adopted amounts for the fiscal year '24, '25 budget. And whereas the expenditure over budget amounted to approximately $74,874.37, this budget amendment number two proposes that we then balance that budget line. You'll see number one, exactly the revenue, employee health benefit revenue lines, the names, and with the amounts that will then correctly bring this into line. Basically, this is just a posting of public expenditures, as I understand from Mr. Duff. We've both spoken about this. And we were not able to get this into the first budget amendment due to the timing of these expenses. Therefore, budget amendment number two is necessary. Also, it needed to be posted in the press. And we were delayed further with that publication. And so it is just now coming before you. Mr. Chairman, I refer to Mr. Duff, any additional information there for you?
Chairman, do you have anything to ask, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, this is purely a timing issue. These, normally, we would get the budget amendments done in July and August, but this one was just missed and then we had to post it. So there was just some delays with the press and getting it onto your agenda.
Okay. Very good. Okay. This has, requires a public hearing, I guess. We will open at 10:27. Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this item? Tick tock. Tick tock. Close the public hearing at 10:27 and a half.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve and adopt Resolution Number 25-09-025.
Second.
The motion in a second. Any discussion required? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Item 16 on the agenda is discussion of establishment of Penrose County Road. So this item was tabled a while back and we need to talk about it. So we've got it on our agenda so we can actually discuss, talk about it. There's a couple of things that we, a process we need to go through. So first, we need to decide if we want it to be a county road or not.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I would personally like to move forward with making Penrose officially a county road and continue maintaining that for the residents that live on that stretch and paying the damages, the $26,000 that came back from the appraisers. I think the folks that live along that road are in support of that. It just makes a lot of sense. I know Commissioner Jennings was thinking about moving the trailhead, but I, you know, I just feel like there's just undue cost associated with that.
I think from my legal counsel, we need to have it in two separate portions. So first is to decide, one, yes or no, is it going to be a county road? Then secondly, we would decide on any damages.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have someone here that wants to speak on that. I don't know if we could comment first and then make a motion?
That sounds like a good idea. Sorry, John, I forgot about you. Want to come and talk?
I would.
Please.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. Since it has been some time since this subject has been discussed, I would take this opportunity to remind the board that three or four months ago, I believe that's the timeframe, the, oh, by the way, my name is John. I'm one of the two landowners of a portion of Penrose Lane with private landowners. And I wanted to take this opportunity to remind the board that three or four months ago, I forget the timeframe, the landowners presented to the commission a proposal whereby we would transfer the road to the county in exchange for, the county agreed to several conditions. Those conditions included no parking on the road, which there is currently no parking on the road, that there would be a posted and enforced 15 mile an hour speed limit, which we as private landowners have posted a 15 mile an hour speed limit on the road. Another condition would be that the landowners on the north side of the road, which is where the private property lies, would be responsible for managing the foliage along the road. That the road would not be widened. But if because of safety reasons, it was required that the road be widened, that said widening of the road would occur on the south side of the road, which would be game and fish property rather than on the north side of the road, which is where the private property lies. The landowners would agree to relinquish any claims for damages that had been made, which those damages were ratified by the three appraisers that you folks appointed. I've forgotten my head. I think those are my conditions I can remember. But so, I just want to remind the board that we made that proposal to you folks. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions for John? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, just a couple of comments. So, state statute requires that we do a traffic study to determine speed limits. So, statute kind of dictates what we do there. I'd have to ask Sheriff Dominguez about parking rules on county roads. I don't think that's allowed anyway. But, you know, I like that some of these things are going to be enforceable now. My concern about the landowners being responsible for vegetation management is just that who decides what's safe and what's not safe? How do we, how do we put boundaries around that? And what does that look like in 20 years? I just, I don't know. That, that sounds pretty sticky to me.
Your road and bridge supervisor, Rowdy Francis, we have been working with him over the years, and he provides us feedback as to what needs to be trimmed, what needs to be trimmed back, is this okay, is this not okay? And we have complied with his recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, I just kind of want to echo a little bit Commissioner Haswell's statement. The idea of the 15 mile an hour speed limit, while I've driven that road and I agree 15 mile an hour is appropriate, but it would be a speed study. My only concern with the idea of the vegetation is if, if we put a specific plan in place for one road, does that open us up to putting in specific plans or tailored plans to other roads? So, that's, that's my only concern. I mean, it's, it's a beautiful, I loved driving down there. You guys take great pride in that area. I can see why you love it. But that's my only concern with those specific qualifications, not qualifications, but require, requests that you have. And I also would like to hear from Sheriff Dominguez on the, what the parking on the side of the road, what that looks like. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Levi Dominguez, Sheridan County Sheriff. There is state statute within public roads that if it's deemed unsafe and parking is on the side of the road and it's not safe to do so, that law enforcement can tow those vehicles or request them to be removed. We tend to do that frequently throughout if we, you know, our deputies are patrolling in an area and come across and see a vehicle is parked in the lane of travel that causes, you know, it to be unsafe. I think, I believe, and Ken could correct me if I'm wrong, but the commissioners can also, there is some authority given to commissioners that can, you can actually post no parking. No parking can be posted, you know, on those and it can be enforced. That was done back when, you know, in Bird Farm Road and we would have fireworks and equestrians in center because it was a safety issue. And so, the Board of County Commissioners, I believe, had, you know, through that pass them to be able to put no parking in those areas that we were able to enforce, you know. No parking on the roadway at all or within the right of way or anything of that matter. But, you know, if a vehicle is parked off within the right of way and it's safe to do so, we don't enforce that. But if it's unsafe, and I know that that's narrow in that area, so it just determine on how much, what kind of vehicles are parked there. But, you know.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Yes?
Many moons ago, counsel for some of the landowners reached out to me, I bear correspondence, with regard to the proposal of, as outlined by the landowner here this morning. Consistently, I rebuffed that offer on the basis of the authority of this board. Statutorily, you have the authority to manage a county road if it's so established. And in the context of, as proposed, a conveyance that would bind the county into the future, that would be the whole point of it, is you would be bound indefinitely into the future with this agreement. You don't have the authority to do that. Any action that you take in terms of management of the county roads can be reversed the next day with, if you so choose. You cannot bind indefinitely. So, the proposal of tying a conveyance into the future management of a county road is just something you cannot do. And that's been conveyed consistently for many months to legal counsel.
Okay. Let's quit. Discussion, anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Ken, can you speak to legal width of county road and what we will have to do to make this legal?
Chairman, question is, the proposal is to make this a 40-foot right of way. That's what's been always been the proposal. So, yeah, it's fully within the label, right, to make 40-foot right of way. Is that answer your question?
Well, if we had to do it to the north, how much more work are we going to have to do?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I think we could talk about easement width and then running road width. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing, actual gravel in the easement or the width of the easement.
I guess where I was going with this is it's, I see a bunch of MDU articles along that north side. And I'm curious as to whether or not we're going to get into an issue where we're going to have to get that moved in order to be correct for state law label on easement on that project.
Mr. Chairman, I think the articles are on the south side.
Oh, sorry, south side, yeah.
So, you know, I don't know. Typically, that's what our license agreement of utilities, when they do permit license in our current county roads, they have to move, we have to request them to, if there's more requests, they have to move on their dime. Now, being a creative county road, when they're there first, I think they probably have some standing that if we ask them to move in the future, then we might have to pay utility relocation costs. But I have no precedence in history of that. So.
But, Mr. Chairman, the way, the way the, Ken, the way the county road, the way the road is right now, if we adopt it as a county road, we don't have to widen the road at this point. Do we? I mean, it's, it would meet our specifications as it is currently.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. For the, for the use of this road and stuff, we have roads like this in other parts of the county. But, yeah, we, we don't just go out and widen the road because we want to. There's usually something that dictates a need to do so.
Right.
And we, I don't foresee the need of doing that on this road.
Correct.
In quite some time. But at some point, there might be a need to do so.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Well, just one other comment. I had some discussions with one of the landowners, Mr. Briscoe. And, and it's from his property line to the county easement is inches. There's just this, yeah, it's just this much of a gap. And he had requested that for his property, then the county take our easement to his property line on the south end.
Right.
Match our north end to his south end so that he didn't have to worry about the seven inches.
Yeah, and I'm not really sure why he's worried about seven inches at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So, anybody else?
Just a question for you, Mr. Chairman. You had started talking about how we needed to split this out procedurally.
Yes. First and foremost, we need to decide, is it going to be a county road or not?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would move to establish Penrose as a county road.
Second. Discussion? I would say that I would like to add or amend, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to amend the motion, but anyway, make it a county road with no restrictions. I think if we, maybe that's what you meant.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, based on Glenn's comments, we don't have the authority to go get into any of those.
Yeah.
So, I think we just make it a county road.
Okay.
Which is why I'm just like that.
All right. All right. Anybody else? Discussion?
So, Chairman, this is a difficult one for me because I don't particularly like how it kind of came about. It seems like there's, there's a lot of, I don't know, I feel like maybe we might want to state, take a step back and look at all of our options going forward with this. I know Commissioner Haswell, you stated that the landowners are in favor. Mr. Maitech is shaking his head, said his name wrong. I'm sorry. I apologize. So, I'm hesitant to move forward with this.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I would say one thing that certainly, and I've had some conversations with, with some of the landowners further down Penrose Road who really don't have legal access to their property if we don't make this a county road. And I think that in terms of protecting those people, it's in the best interest, if we don't make it a county road, then they're going to have to come up with some sort of agreement with the game and fish and, and purchase an easement through the game and fish. And that, we all know the red paper required when you're dealing with state to try and get something like that accomplished. So, I just, I just think it's in the best interest of, of the, those people if we do make it a county road.
Okay. Just for clarification, the motion was to make Penrose Lane a county road. All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item in this, next idea in this item is to visit about any damages. Correct, Clint?
Correct.
So, the appraisers accounting for damages, I believe, is $27,000. Is that right? Ken? I believe that's what it was, something like that.
Red and yellow vicinity, anyway.
Yeah.
So, I have that. What come? Mr. Chairman, that came directly to the commission of public works.
Okay, okay. So, conversation's about damages. We could, we could decide to pay while the appraisers advised us to pay, or we can come up with some other number.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
While I've been thought of favor of making it a county road per se, I do think that if we are going to take that property, we need to follow the appraisers and pay when they've pulled the string to pay for it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I did find that it's a $23,000 split between the two property owners. It's not evenly split. You'll have to write. The total is $27,000.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve damage payments for the appraisers' report.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion? Mr. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've been maintaining that road and getting some off that road and adding gravel to it for about 30 some years. I, I would actually like to see a trade-out for the work that we've done for the, the appraised value of the land personally.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Well, well, part of me does appreciate the decades of snow removal that we've been doing on that road. You know, I feel like it's, it's fair to pay the, pay the damages. So.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I have very mixed feelings about that. I'm not sure we actually owed the damages, but we did have, we did get appraisers to do it. The appraisers in good faith determined that. And so, I guess that, that if we're going to follow statute and follow our regulations and follow what we did, then, then that would probably be the proper thing to do.
Yeah, it looks like Mr. Maludich, Dr. Hennett, and Mr. Robinson combined get $10,000. And another payment to Mr. Maludich for $13,500 and another payment to Hennett and Robinson for $3,500. So, that's going to be what all that's for. It's the appraisers' appraisal. So, anyway, we have a motion in a second to pay the damages. All the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No. Motion passes. That, we're adjourned at 10:49.